Gwinnett County, the people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.
Let's talk about discipline, and that's one. I actually have three points. One thing I wanted to make sure that I said is that we do have people, Black people in our community, who identify as trans, who identify as a particularity. This is something that is our intersectional identity is something for us to respect. And that despite when we start siloing, I do, I do agree that it's important for us to focus on things that impact certain communities because they are different. Anti-blackness is specific to the Black community, very specific. And anti-blackness is global. Anti-blackness is a pandemic. Anti-blackness impacts each and every one of us in this room. And there is no one who is living and breathing in the United States of America who can tell me if you're swimming in these waters of white supremacy that you too are not impacted, because you are.
When it comes down to the idea of a book banning, if it hasn't happened in Gwinnett, the only thing that's happened is LGBTQ stuff, and that's not Black, right? Would we, would we be putting a lot of energy, would we be adding energy into something that doesn't necessarily benefit us? Wouldn't it be best if we, if we organize a type of, like what you were saying before, we organize, as NAACP, we organize a parents, teachers, children, this book? So we focus there, because what I've seen a lot with us is a people lately, and I believe this is why a lot of us are tired, is that we jump on the bandwagon of other people's fights, and we say the DEI stuff. We say literally whatever everybody else talks about is what we talk about. But we don't say, let's focus on Black, just go Black. We'll go LGBTQ, we'll go DEI, ESG, we do all that other stuff. And then we try to figure out a way to bring it back to our children, when it doesn't affect our children until these other people actually get their way, and then it perverts our children. So wouldn't that be another way of actually being proactive? If we want these books in, because I read, I read the curriculum that the, that the Florida is talking about, right? What everybody got all upset about, I actually read the curriculum. And there, and that curriculum is teaching children things that I grew up in Florida, I never learned. I'm talking about, they're talking about Maverick McPhee, Madam CJ Walker, Mae Jameson, they're talking about the slave rebellion, they're talking about some dope stuff, but on the TV, all I heard was that one line that he said about what slaves benefited from. And outside of that, everything else that I saw in that curriculum was gone, like nobody talked about it. And I said, that was another example of, I believe, why we're so tired, because we just hear people constantly talk about whatever these people on TV tell us to talk about. But when it comes down to us saying, well, let's focus on Black, let's fix things in the Black community, all of a sudden, it's like, well, we ain't got time for it, that's controversial. So that's what I, I want to see if we could go on that, that other end that you were talking about in regards to, the other end where you said that, let's get to the parents and the grandparents teaching specific books, I think that'd be very, very productive.
Thanks for tuning in to War Room, Gwinnett County. I'm your host, Antonio Jones. What you just saw was a Gwinnett County NAACP beating, where our chairwoman from the school board, Therese Johnson, was there. And the guy, Egypt X, he, he kind of, so it's Egypt X on Instagram, he kind of lit into him. And, you know, I could tell by the way Therese was sitting, that she was completely uncomfortable from what he was saying, because it goes against the whole narrative of everything that people that are in there pushing an agenda stands for. So, we got, let's talk about this, this graduation rate. Oh, another thing he pointed out, what, one, one of the key things he said, if you go back and listen to it, and we'll put the, the link up, so you can go back and listen to the entire video, because there were a number of other things that was said in the video too, as well. But one of the things he said that stood out was, he said, the, the stuff that we, we're hearing on the, on the news, you know, the DEI, you know, all the diversity and equity and things like that, is basically a distraction from the real issues that's affecting the Black community, because that was the topic of discussion. The graduation rate is down here in, in Gwinnett County from last year. And it's no secret that we've been having a lot of disciplinary problems. And one of the things that wasn't shown in this video, which is completely off the rails, in my opinion, is Penny Poole, who has her eyes set on the Gwinnett County Chair, which is a whole nother video that we probably need to do. Penny Poole and Therese kind of came together and, and agreed that, I guess, Black kids need to have more people that look like them teaching them. I don't, I don't know where they get that from. There, there are several, that's basically a slap in the face to any educator that gets up with, you know, making sure that, with, on their mind, making sure that these kids have a sound education. A lot of educators don't make a, a ton of money. So there are many sacrifices that are made, but we're gonna point at the way somebody looks. I mean, that's, you know, that, that's completely unacceptable. But we played that video because I want you guys to see the hypocrisy that exists. You know, we got them going around talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, adversity, equity, and inclusion. And, you know, some of the things that we see, there are no other races invited to have a conversation about anything, I mean, unless it's a, a school board meeting or something like that. They do the opposite of what they push. So the disciplinary issues, in my opinion, is, is, is persistent, because it's reflecting in the, in the grades and everything, and the graduation rate. You know, Therese openly supports the, the ALG community, you know, and look, look what the Nashville shooter just did. You know, I don't know, maybe somebody needs to send Therese a copy of the manifesto. But I want to look at some things that came out on the UCLA School of Law. It says, "More than 40% of transgender adults in the US have actually attempted suicide." This is a mental condition. This is not something that we should be rallying behind and supporting. So on, on their website, it says, "A new study from the Williams Institute at UCLA School of Law finds that 81% of transgender adults in the US have thought about suicide. 42% of transgender adults have actually attempted it. And 56% have been engaged in non-suicidal self-injury over their lifetimes." So these lifestyles is mental illness. And everybody that's rallying behind our chairwoman, they sit up here and had a parade, a pride parade, in, in my opinion, desecrated all of the hard work that the people that came before, the newcomers like myself, in Gwinnett County, all the hard work they did to build this county. It was among one of the top counties in the country. And this is the kind of things that we promote and we're having around our children that we're celebrating. All right, Children'sHospital.org, according to their, here's their definition of gender dysphoria. It said, "Gender dysphoria occurs when there is a conflict between the sex you were assigned at birth and the gender, gender that you identify with." According to the DailySignal.com, okay, let's, let's talk about some details of what the, the, what happened in the Nashville shooting, as far as the manifesto is concerned. We need, we need leadership on these school boards that understand that this is a mental illness. That's what it is. And it's time to stop going along with this. Okay, this, this, this particular article was from the DailySignal.com. It said, "The Police Department has suspended seven detectives that leaked the information." So I guess the kind of action that they're taking now. All right, "Three pages reveal the sick mind of the mass shooter. In them, Haley expressed hatred for white people whom she refers to as crackers. 'Kill those kids,' I quote, 'those crackers, going to private fancy schools with fancy khakis and sports backpacks in their daddy's Mustangs and convertibles. F you, little,' she wrote. 'I wish, I wish to shoot your weak and mop your yellow hair, wanna kill you little crackers, bunch of little.'" It's just, it's too much to read. "These remarks echo the Left's ideological talking points on white privilege and revealed a disdain for others based on their skin color. This hatred of white people echoes the Marxist claim that America is institutionally racist. So just as the man stripping whites of their privilege and elevating racial minorities rather than securing a level playing field for all races." You know, kind of sounds like diversity, equity, inclusion, in my view. "Other statements reveal the shooter's emotional state, a steely determination despite strong anxiety." And this is a quote from the shooter. "Can't believe I'm doing this, but I'm ready. I hope my victims aren't," unquote, she wrote. And I quote, "God let my wrath take over my anxiety," end of quote. "This anger resolving hatred hinted something the coroner would not confirm. It seems likely that Audrey Hale had taken cross-sex hormones, probably testosterone, before the shooting. Although female mass shooters are extremely rare, if a female who thinks of herself as a male takes testosterone, it is likely, it likely will embolden her. This drug does not excuse her evil massacre, but it can explain why a female would commit such a heinous crime." I wanted to share that information because we need to put any leadership in this county on notice that is supporting this mental, this is a mental illness. You know, a lot of them want to say, oh, you know, all the kids, we, it's so much mental illness that's going on because of COVID-19. No, this is the true mental illness and the irresponsibility of our leadership in this county, promoting this kind of stuff and saying it's okay. If we really want to help people that are having these issues, we need to be honest and we need to tell the truth. So moving on, maybe she hasn't, maybe Therese Johnson hasn't saw this, and unfortunately, she's running unopposed in her district this time around. We need some people to stand up in the community, we need to find some candidates, because she needs to be primary. That's what needs to happen. All of this stuff, the, the last statement in that video, "We're swimming in a sea of white supremacy," what is that supposed to mean? Does that mean that every other person is racist? I think it's a overt mischaracterization of the county that we live in. And it is, it's totally unfair to the rest of the citizens that are good law-abiding citizens that won't, want to do, that are willing to do the right thing. We, we have a special guest coming up, but we're gonna take a, a short break. Leave it in the comments, well, what is your opinion on what you saw on this video of Chair Lady Therese Johnson? Back in a moment.
Accelerate your business goals and brand presence on the world wide web by logging on to SafewayHost.store to purchase domain names, web hosting, email hosting, SSL, and more. We have 24/7 customer service and support available to our clients. Get started today so you can achieve your business goals by increasing your web presence. Log on to SafewayHost.store today. That's SafewayHost.store.
War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.
In-person learning in school buildings will be suspended for the rest of the school year.
Governor Tom Wolf announced a statewide mask mandate for school kids will start next week.
But what does that mean for schools? It could be an extension of a school uniform.
Either we have a representative form of government, or we don't. Either parents have the right to direct the upbringing of their children, or they don't. The real issue here is you believe you must protect children from their parents. I reject that notion. Parents as a whole are more trustworthy than any government entity.
Children need two things, the chance to bask in the glory of childhood and boundaries that provide the structure for them to mature into responsible adults.
I was disappointed that for so long I had trusted the system.
Our schools are becoming indoctrination camps and a breeding ground for hatred and division. Just look what it's doing to teachers and parents. Does this look like love and unity?
We both served as school board members, and we saw behind the education curtain. And then COVID happened, and all of America saw behind the education curtain. We're about parental rights. Every parent has the fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children, their medical care, their healthcare, their education. We do not co-parent with the government.
We saw the imbalance of power that was happening in education, even here in Florida. Teachers' unions, bureaucrats, all taking control of decisions, multiple decisions, not just teacher salary like most people think, but things like when school starts and stops, when school's gonna be opened and closed.
We started with just two chapters here in Florida, in our communities, and within a matter of five months, we've grown to over 30 chapters in 18 states, 15,000 members.
We didn't want to leave you with a depressing segment, because there's always hope in everything that we have going on nowadays. So we want to bring in a special guest, Tina Deskovic, one of the co-founders of Moms for Liberty. Tina, welcome to the War Room.
Thanks, Antonio. Great to be here.
All right, so we want to start off with, I know you saw the first segment and everything, and we showed what our chairwoman had to say. I talked about a few things that we have going on in the county. Disciplinary problems is one of them. The second was, is what's downstream of disciplinary problems, and that's your literacy rates. So this year, we had a reduction in the graduation rate. What is your take on what you saw in that video and what you know about the stats of what's going on here in Gwinnett County?
I think what you saw is an excuse for education failure, not only in your county in Gwinnett, but in America as a whole. This idea that, look at the science of reading and things that will actually help students learn. So nationally, right now, the National Report Card came out, and it's very clear that America is in crisis with public education right now. We have only two-thirds, only one-third actually, of American fourth graders reading on grade level. We have the lowest reading scores overall since the 1980s nationally, and the lowest math scores ever recorded in the United States. If you zero in on Georgia just a little bit more, it looks even more dismal. And if you zero in on Black students in Georgia, so nationally, only 17% of Black fourth grade children can read on grade level. I'm gonna pause and let that sink in for a second. 17%, so out of every 100 Black fourth grade students in America, 17 can read on grade level. Do you know what the life looks like for the rest of those children? Not good. And if you want to dive down into Georgia right now, from the National Report Card, only 11% of Black fourth grade students can read on grade level. That is criminal. What we are doing to Black students in the state of Georgia and across America, it's criminal. And to divide people by race and say that's the problem, it's the color of their skin, it's the, it's, it's racism by people with a different color skin, and that's why Black students aren't reading, that is a false statement, and it is an excuse for education failure.
Yeah, well, if, for those that haven't saw that NAACP video in its entirety, I would encourage you, we're gonna put the link up, so you can go back and, and watch it. But one of the excuses for being able to get through to teach that was pointed out was, you know, that Black students need more people that look like them. I mean, that's, that don't make any sense. I mean, I've, I've played on several teams, I have different races of coaches and everything, that was never on their manifesto or agenda, you know? I'm a white coach, I can't push and get the best, best out of a, a Black kid, because I don't understand them from a cultural standpoint. What does that have to do with anything? I don't think it has to do with anything. I think it's a big, big excuse for the failures that are happening in our school system.
You are 100% correct. You know, I've had teachers in my life and mentors of all races, I've had male teachers and female teachers, and it, what really mattered was the quality of the teacher, and if they cared about me. That, that is what helped me advance and learn. That's what wanted me, that's what made me want to learn and engage and do well in school. So we need, we need quality teachers in classrooms, we don't need to identify them by race or skin color. You know, when I was growing up in America, we used the term colorblind, and I know that that, I know enough that if I put color, I wish the world was colorblind out on social media right now, I will just get abused, because apparently that's a bad term. But the truth is, we shouldn't be looking at skin color with any of these things. We are all children of God, we are all American citizens, and those things should come first, and we should all be rooting for each other and pulling for each other, and not dividing by race, or sex, or class, or any of those things that, that the enemy wants us to be divided by right now.
Absolutely. So I mentioned that Therese Johnson is running unopposed, but before we get to that, can you tell us a little bit about Moms for Liberty? It's home of beginnings and everything, it's a little bit about the organization itself?
We can, but the fact that you've got anyone in America running unopposed in school board right now is a disservice to any school district in the country. The point of our system and having elections, you absolutely should always have opposition. Opposition will make you better, it'll make you have to answer the hard questions, it's, it's necessary. Even if you're a good, wonderful school board member, and you've done a great job, having someone run against you every two to four years, whatever your cycles are, is important. So I encourage anyone listening to this that is in that district and in that county, step up to the plate, run! You will not regret running for school board. I served, my co-founder Tiffany Justice served on school boards in Florida 2016 to 2020. I won my first election in a landslide, and I lost it pretty bad the second time around. Both times, I learned so much about myself and my community. Do it, do it, do it. And we'll get into Moms for Liberty, but first, one thing about Moms for Liberty is, we will help you. We can train you, we can train you to run for school board, we can give you the tools you need to run for school board. And, you know, we're gonna talk a little bit about the event coming up, but if, if they come out, I'd be happy to talk to them and get them plugged in with the right people to give them everything they need to have a successful campaign. So, Antonio, you wanted to know about Moms for Liberty. We're a grassroots nonprofit organization founded by myself and my co-founder Tiffany Justice. Like I said, we're former school board members, we served from 2016 to 2020, and we like to say we saw behind the education curtain. We saw what is happening in public education. And honestly, two pretty darn good districts in Florida, but if the things that were happening in our districts were happening all across the country, we knew that there was work to be done. And when 2020 happened, all of America got to see behind the education curtain. You saw parents finding lessons that were being streamed into their home that they were shocked and appalled at. You found parents that went down to their school board meetings to speak out about them, and they got shut down, locked out, time went from three minutes to one minute, you know, Zoom links were lost if it was, if it was an online meeting and not sent to parents so they could participate. And parents needed a way to organize to push back. So we launched Moms for Liberty on January 1st of 2021. We're under three years old, but we are now in 48 states with 300 chapters and 130,000 parents, mostly moms, but we have dads and grandparents, aunts and uncles too, that are all part of our organization, that are working to be watchdogs over their school districts, and they're working to defend parental rights at all levels of government.
Right. It's, it's pretty sad that nowadays, it's like, we have to redefine, we've been put in a position of where we have to redefine. It's just like men and women's sports. It's like, it's, it's a girl's sport. So why do we have to go for getting legislation passed to, you know, deal with issues like that? This is like, it's crazy to have to do that, because it also is a big, I don't want to say it's a distraction, but it's, it's a waste of time, and it drains a lot of resources and energy for something that's, is already there, you know what I mean?
100%. It takes away from the, the things that school districts should be doing, and that should be teaching kids the basics. They should be reading and writing, they should be able to do arithmetic, they should be able to understand science and the scientific method, they should know actual and true history, so they do not repeat where we've made mistakes in the past. All of those things are not being done, not being done well. Civics in America is at an all-time low, civics education is at an all-time low. We are just in a crisis in education, and unless we stop focusing on the things that are common sense and we shouldn't be fighting about, and start focusing on teaching kids to read, we are, you know, our civilization is, is really gonna be in a bad place.
Right. And stop this overt fixation on race, when it is a non-factor. I mean, we should just have a, a general set of rules that everyone should abide by, and that's just the bottom line. You know, we, we shouldn't have to say, oh, let's, let's get more Black teachers in here, or let's get more white, any kind of teacher. It's just a teacher, for crying out loud.
A good teacher, let's get a good teacher.
Right. Let's get a good teacher, and, and stop prevising it with what their race is, because that doesn't matter. You know, and we're, we're teaching our kids to, to focus on something that we say we want to leave in the past, you know, the people that are pushing certain things. So I had a couple of people that inboxed me and saying, "Don't have Moms, believe it or not, don't have Moms for Liberty on." You know, they're a hate group and all of this, and me and this particular person kind of started to tango a little bit, and I said, "Well, why are they a hate group?" Well, they, they want to get rid of books. Well, what kind of books do they want to get rid of? And so when you start kind of digging out down into it, the person looks for the easiest exit sign that they can find out of the conversation. Because we're, we're having a similar, shout out to Karen Hall, she's a, a parent that has been getting into the weeds of the library, and what they've done in, in this school system is, they're not gonna remove the inappropriate books that are talking about certain things and adult content, oh, we're just gonna label that. Well, why even have it in there in the first place? That's like saying, well, we're gonna put a vending machine up, and we'll put the cigarette machine right next to it, or whatever, and we'll just put a, a cigarette mark on there. No, it's, it's not appropriate for children, you know? And I don't understand what type of mind frame that this particular guy that inboxed me on yesterday has that will try to defend this type of stuff. Oh, well, you know, kids are not, one of the points was, well, kids are not learning about their bodies, you know, to say the least, at home, so, you know, they need to learn it at school. And I said, "Well, well, why? Anything past general health, what does a kid need to be learning?" And I said, "Dude, you sound a bit weird on, on my inbox, saying stuff like this. It's like, what are you thinking about? These are other people's children. The schools don't own our kids." And the system is supposed to work for us, you know, it's the biggest line item on your taxes, you know, when you get your tax bill every year. You know, but it, it seems like a lot of things are not happening to our satisfaction. So the people that's been running around saying, "Oh, Moms for Liberty is a hate group," what, what do you have to say to that accusation?
We reject, yeah, we, we handedly, easily reject that, and it's, it's nonstop. From the time we launched, shortly after, we were racist through the national media everywhere you could, everywhere you could look. Then we were bigots and homophobes, then we went on to be book burners and Nazis. I, right now, I'm not, I think we're a combination of all those things, including Christian fascists, we're always fascists, like, they just throw names at us all the time. You know, names, what is it, sticks and stones may break my bones, but names and faces will never hurt me. We aren't, we're not, we're not paying that any attention, we let it roll off us, there's some work is way too important. But I will tell you, Antonio, we've gone from a place beyond sticks and stones, I mean, beyond... I mean, beyond names and faces, and we've moved into a place of threats. Some, beyond threats, like what's even worse than the threats that come into us? We get postcards written from Satan. We get some very evil, twisted things sent to us that are a little disturbing. I'm not going to lie. And then beyond that, we have things like the federal government. You have the Biden administration working with the Department of Justice and the FBI to label parents domestic terrorists and use laws to get terrorism out of the United States against our moms, calling them at home after they've spoken at school board meetings. That is, that is terrifying in America today. And then when that didn't stick and that didn't work because we just kept going and let that roll off our backs, they met with the Southern Poverty Law Center, who visited their White House six times before labeling us anti-government extremist group. And so they put us on their hate map. So now every time we appear in the media, which is why your friend that reached out to you said we're a hate group, every time we appear in the media now, they say Moms for Liberty, comma, hate group, or anti-government extremist group, or extremist group Moms for Liberty. And they do that because of what the Southern Poverty Law Center said. And all of that has been done because Moms for Liberty is upsetting the balance of power. There is a certain group, the teachers, unions and others, that have had a stronghold on public education for decades. And we just talked about how it is failing miserably. And then you have another group, Moms for Liberty, who's come in, is shining a light on that failure, wants to get involved to help fix that failure and is exposing them for what they've done the last several decades. They don't like it. And so they're throwing everything and the kitchen sink at us. It's not going to slow us down. It's not going to stop us. Parents will not give in to this and there's nobody that's going to fight for their children like mothers.
That's right. And so you commit that you guys are going to fight to the bitter end to get this right in this country as far as this education system is and make sure that parents have, are able to exercise their rights and get involved.
Antonio, what are we going to do with, 80% of American kids are in public schools. And right now across the country, in most states, or at least in most districts and in many states, little kids are being taught, they can be a boy, they can be a girl, they can be neither, they can be both. They are being exposed to books like you just mentioned with sexually explicit material. Middle schools all across the country have access to gender queer in their libraries, which has pictures of two kids with a strap-on
Yep.
male part, giving each other oral sex. Like, what is going to happen when these children are 18? Like, what kind of children have we produced with an 11% reading rate that don't know if they're a boy or a girl, that have been exposed to sexually explicit material from a young age? What are we doing to our kids? We are going to stand and fight this, 100% hands down.
That's right. Not even to mention that the, all the access that these kids have now with the cell phones and everything. You just dial up, you know? And I tell parents and everything, and I'll say it again, we did a, shout out to Street Grace, another organization that we've had on that talked about child trafficking and everything. But there is a way around everything in the digital realm. So if your kid has a phone and everything, it's virtually impossible to police every single thing on that. And you better be checking that bad boy all the time. I mean, all the time, you know? Because we don't know the lasting effects that exposure to certain content is going to have. You know, a lot of kids end up depressed, you know, basement dwellers that won't, don't, won't move out of the house, you know, all kinds of things that's going on. They suffer from depression. And you know, and the answer to this is administrations and everything saying, hey, let's give them, give them some drugs, you know, maybe, maybe this will help. And then I guess SSRIs or whatever they're called, ends up making them even worse off, making their anxiety and all this other stuff wor- worse. You know, we grew up in a time where the parents were engaged and they challenged us and they told us no, gave us hard things to do and everything. It's like we've completely turned our back on that way.
We have. You said that we don't know what the long-term effects are, but we do. We know what the long-term effects are on some of these things, like being exposed to sexually explicit material at young ages. When you sexualize children at a young age, you have, you've messed with their ability to be stable, productive adults. Everybody knows that. All the science research shows that. And so we have to work hard to make sure that doesn't happen. The thing with the phones, you know, that's a parent's decision. There's so many apps and tools and resources now to put time constraints and you can have the passwords and make sure they don't have access to certain apps. There's all kinds of things you can do as a parent. But when you drop your child off at the local school, the public school for the day, you should have complete confidence that they are not going to be exposed to sexually explicit material, that they are not going to be taught to hate their country or the form of government that our country runs under, or the capitalism or anything that has to do with America. You should be confident that those things are happening in your public school. But I'll tell you right now, parents are not confident that that's what's happening in public school classrooms.
And that's all the more reason they should make sure that they get in touch for and follow Moms for Liberty because they can tell you how to get involved because there is an upside to this. Can you share with the audience how many seats you guys have been able to win over time? Because I saw in some of the literature on the website that, you know, some of the seats that you guys had taken in the past, but I don't know if it was an updated number, but it looks like you guys are making great progress on getting good people elected.
Yeah, we sure are. So again, we are under three years old. We didn't start endorsing until last year. Our chapters, as they were working within their school districts to fight certain things, realized that their school board members were never going to support a parent's right to direct the upbringing of their children. And they decided they wanted to get involved in the election process. We are a 501(c)(4) nonprofit, so we can only get involved in elections at a very small level. We can't get out and give money necessarily to candidates and such. But we can endorse and we can vet candidates and we can tell you which candidate is best for children and will support a parent's right to direct the upbringing of their children. So that's what our chapter started doing last year. Last year they endorsed in 500 races across the country and they won 275 of those races, which was remarkable, first year out the door without any money to put behind these candidates. This year we have won over 90 seats so far. So I think we're up to 365 people right now across the country, our Moms for Liberty endorsed candidates sitting on school boards. So we are thrilled. We're going to keep moving forward. National media the last few days is focusing on everywhere we've ever lost a race. We don't focus in on that because that is not how you move forward. That is not how you rally the troops to keep running and to keep fighting. We are doing all that we can to get people in those seats.
Outstanding. Another question. When you, oh, would you guys ever consider, I know you have been endorsing like school board seats? Is it limited to that? Or would you consider endorsing like maybe, we've interviewed a couple of local sheriffs and a couple of them, great, great guys, considering that? Because it's our belief that the five areas of focus locally is going to be a sheriff, well, some of the topics, sheriff, district attorney, school board, county commission and city council seats. And we try to share information on the show and everything about the candidates and the things that are going on in those offices because they're part of one body or what have you. If you have, you know, you don't have a good police chief or whatever, and I know they're appointed by city councils and county commission, then other parts of the society starts to degrade. You know, if you don't have a district attorney that's prosecuting the crime and you got a good set of police that are going out here, it kind of almost nullifies their existence. So would you guys consider maybe in the future, if you're not doing it now? Or you just stick to the school?
Yeah, no, there are organizations that endorse in all of those races right now. But the only people that stand by school board candidates and endorse the school board races historically is teachers unions. And so there's not really ever been an opposition to that. So that's who we are. That's what we're going to focus. There's way too much work in that area to do. We can't be watered down with the other races when they already get support and attention and many other fashions. So our sole endorsements right now are only school board races. Next year we are going to add state-level education races. So if you have a state ed leader, like a state superintendent, or if your school board statewide is elected, we're going to get involved in that. But those are the only races we will, we will be involved in.
Okay, sounds great. So Monday, you guys, Monday, you have an event here in Georgia and Gwinnett County. Do you want to tell people a little bit about it? Date, location and everything like that about it?
I do. So I will be in Atlanta on Monday. I'm very excited about coming there. I will be in Gwinnett County in Duluth at Gas South District? Is that what it's called? Did I get that right? The Gas South District? Yeah, Monday night, 7:00 PM, doors open at 6:30. We've been doing a series of town halls across the country called Giving Parents a Voice Town Halls. They have been wildly successful. They are a good time. So please register if you can and come out and join us. We have, Dr. Elvita King is going to be joining us as a special guest. We have former Senator Kelly Loeffler coming to speak to us for a bit. And then we're going to do an ed panel with four legislators, two from your House of Representatives and two from your state senate. And we're going to discuss policies and laws that impact parental rights and education and the state of education in Georgia. The best part always is the last about 45 minutes, we open it up to the audience. We open a mic up to the audience and we let the audience ask questions of the legislators about education and where they see it going and what their concerns are. And it really is, is usually a really good time. So people can go to momsforliberty.org/townhall. Hopefully we can put the link maybe on this event page. And you have to register. It's free, but you have to register and bring your ID. And your ID has to be with the name that you registered with to enter.
Can't be like you trying to vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, you don't need ID to vote in half the country, but you need ID to come to a Moms for Liberty Town Hall. Bring your ID. You know, a lot of times our haters like to register online with nefarious names. I think Gloria Steinem registers for every one of our events, which is, you know, we've yet to see her, but there's, it's super fun. They use fake names. So we, we want just real, actual people to show up and participate in this town hall. It's great for communities and so we look forward to it. I look forward to seeing you Monday night.
Absolutely. We love a good troll in there. I'm telling you, it's a couple of them in the comments, but they're getting handled pretty good by the people that follow the War Room, that follow the show and everything. Yeah, great. But it's been great having you on here, Moms for Liberty, Liberty. You guys are doing an excellent job. We encourage everybody to follow Moms for Liberty and support it. But most of all, you know, get involved. That's what we need to do. That's what we have to do. That's just a place where, I want to give a special shout out to Margaret Rudnick for putting this together, to linking us and everything for doing that.
Yeah, Antonio, if I may, Margaret is our brand new chapter chair there in Gwinnett. The chapter's only like a month old, so we are excited, maybe two months old. We're excited to launch that and Margaret's doing a great job. So when you go to momsforliberty.org also, you can click on the map on Gwinnett County and you can join the chapter. And so get involved. Yes, let's find us a candidate to run in your district against that wall. And yeah, let's do it.
We got to do it. Yeah, and Margaret's a, she's a bit of a firebrand too now. Don't, don't, don't let her fool you.
She's great.
Sounds good. And so hold on for a second, we're going to close everything out. But it's been a pleasure. Is anything else you need to share before we?
No, sir. Look forward to seeing everybody Monday night.
All right, well, that sounds great. All right, that was Tina Deskovic from Moms for Liberty. Make sure you register on momsforliberty.org/townhall and we look forward to seeing you in the building on Monday night. But we do, we have to get somebody to run for this seat. It is so important that we have adequate representation for people that are going to do the right thing. And I know it's been a lot of stuff going on, but we have to remember this one thing. My pastor says it all the time. Luke 1:37 said, "For with God, nothing shall be impossible." We'll see you guys on the next one.